All right. Good evening, everyone. We now have a quorum, so we'll get started. There's copies of the agenda on the table up front here if anyone needs it. And I will ask if anybody is recording this meeting, would they make it known? Thanks. Regarding the Form A on, I believe it's the one Cranberry Highway, yeah, 2298. At some point, we either put it on hold, waiting information, or denied it, depending on what their -- was it this meeting or the next one?
It was the December 9th meeting that they asked for the continuance.
Let me just check the -- at one of the meetings, we had voted, we had said if their letter indicated withdrawal, fine, if not, it was a denial.
Right.
And I don't know if the minutes should reflect it in this meeting or...
I think it was the next, I think it was two weeks later.
Okay.
Because they didn't show up for that next meeting.
Okay. What's your pleasure with the minutes of December 9th? Somebody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept the minutes of December 9th, 2013, as written.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. opposed, standing. The next is the... February. Okay, to make a motion for the minutes of...
Mr. Chairman, can we make a motion if Mr. Baptiste was absent?
Was he absent from that one?
Yes, there was.
Oh, yeah, start over again.
Can we still make a motion, sir?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to accept the minutes of February 10th, 2014, as written.
And I will second that. Any discussion?
No, I'll take your word for it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Two, zero, one. Very good. The bills will take care of that. I think two. It is posted for seven o'clock, so with that, I will... I guess we're going back to the old ways of checking the green cards. The way we used to do it.
Wrong old ways, huh?
Is there a list, Mr. Chairman?
I was just going through that.
I'll check them for you.
You want to read or you want to check?
Do you two read them?
Let me see, but I just want to check those out. While you're doing that, I will look.
What am I doing? I check this one out. You tell me what you got, and I'll check them over here. Is that what I do?
Yeah.
Ready?
Yeah.
Here's one that's all checked off. Good.
Stephen Rogers. Stephen Christie. Christopher Johnson.
Good.
Ruth Rice.
Good.
And Star Company.
Good.
Cheryl Magolus. Okay, Kenneth and Diane.
Madigan.
Madigan.
Mm-hmm.
Kevin Egan.
Yes.
Brian and Lamona.
O'Hearn.
O'Hearn.
Yes.
Hello, Paula Newcomb.
Yes.
James and Pamela Franklin.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Justin Stavish.
Yes.
Matthew Henderson and Dudley Henderson.
Yes.
Jared Wobell.
Yes.
Paul Harigan and Judith Shevin.
Yes.
Frank Lima.
Yes.
Harry and Margaret.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes, Schultz.
Yeah, something like that.
Stephen J. Doyle.
Yeah, and Associates.
S.T.E.B. or P.H.? There are some, Mr. Chairman, there are some names on the list that the cards weren't present for.
Who are we missing?
We're missing Jessica Wilson. And we're missing Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Jesus, good. His common mass right here, I got that one?
And we're missing Daniel and Linda Silveira.
I'm going to check those cards one more time. Mr. Baptiste? Give me one second here.
I don't see any receipts of...
Justin Stavish, Stavish, I got that, huh?
Are they local addresses on those, sir?
Daniel and Linda Silveira are 15 Cahoon Street.
Daniel and Linda Silveira, I've got it right here.
Yeah, okay. And the last one missing, Mr. Chairman, is Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Oh, you got that.
Got that one.
No, Jessica Wilson.
Local address, too? Watch it, they're super sensitive, step. I don't want to spit on my fingers, you know?
Yeah.
That would be unsanitary.
Please look through here for Jessica Wilson. Say it again.
Do we have anybody here that's not the same as somebody else?
I wouldn't know, I'm going to count the cards when you're done with the questions.
So, just one missing?
There's still one missing, Mr. Chairman. Would you call her name? See if she might be present.
What is her name again?
Her name is Jessica Wilson.
Is there a Jessica Wilson present tonight?
We're looking for one of butter.
Was that checked off on the one that was previously checked, was it checked? We have 20 cards here, and I checked off 20 names, Mr. Chairman, but Jessica Wilson is missing.
Mm-hmm. Probably haven't got the receipt back. All right, I will go forward and open the public hearing. In accordance with the provision of Chapter 41, Section 81T and 81U, Mass. General Law, the Wayham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, February 24th, 2014, at 7:00 PM in Room 320 in the Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. On the application of Marion Chovitz, is it corrected?
George.
Okay. 9 Cahoon Street, Buzzards Bay, Mass., for approval of a definitive subdivision plan entitled "Definitive Subdivision Plan of Cahoon Place" by Stephen Doyle and Associates, 42 Canterbury Lane, East Falmouth, dated December 30th, 2013, located on 9 Cahoon Street, Wayham, Mass., assesses map 8 parcels 1041, 1042, 1043, 1050, and 1051, and showing two proposed lots. Copy of the plan and the application is on file with the Planning Department at Memorial Town Hall, 54 Marion Road, and may be inspected during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at the time and place designated. With that, if I could have the applicants.
Good evening. My name is Steve Doyle. I've prepared the plan before you this evening. I'm representing the owner, Mr. Schultz, and also Mel Golly, the applicant on this project. I've outlined in green here the entire property that Mr. Schultz owns, which is just over four acres, and he has one residence, it's his year-round residence, he lives there on the site, and his driveway access is from the southwest portion there. There's a way that goes down into the existing dwelling with a turnaround. So, Mr. Schultz wants to create one additional building lot and buy the property. So that we have, this is Mr. Schultz's existing dwelling. This lot would be a 90,000 square foot lot, shown in red. The new buildable lot would be shown in green here at 51,000 square feet, and we've created in blue a 40-foot wide roadway with a hammerhead to provide zoning frontage to the property. We would like to, we're asking as part of the subdivision waivers from the design and construction of the proposed 40-foot way, and use the existing driveway, gravelway. This is a road that's shown as far back on plan as 1929, so it's been there, what, over 80 years? And there were no real drainage problems. This at one time was a sand pit, this site, so everything is very sandy, it's obviously grown back up at this point. There are no drainage issues. And the parcel, it's not a buildable lot, shown here in blue, is to be, it's about 13,000 square feet, and that's to be conveyed to Mr. and Mrs. Habeck, the property owners And this portion that's cut off because of the creation of the new roadway is a separate parcel, and that is conveyed as an easement also for use over that portion, over the existing access to the new lot in here. So that's the proposal before you this evening. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is that current access, is that shown as an easement currently, or just an old?
Well, it's actually owned, it's part of his, this portion is what we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
And it's incorporated under ownership into the entire parcel. So because when we create paper roadway here, we're cutting that section off from the rest of it, so we had to create a separate parcel. The building site, I should say, was proposed dwelling would be in here, well buffed from the surrounding properties. Up back, you have the railroad, then you have some wooded area, then you have a steep drop-off in the bank all the way around here, and a new structure would be located in this area. These lots on the street, this one, and this one are vacant, and then there are houses on these additional lots.
Questions from the board?
We did, I should also say, get some feedback through Brenda that the first choice of Cahoon for the road name was not welcomed, so we went to choice number two, which is Marlin Way, I think. They don't want the confusion, of course, of Cahoon Place and Cahoon Street.
I would point out also that the existing water service to Marlin's house comes down the drive, and we would put an additional service down the drive for this lot, and the existing power comes through a pole on the street subsurface, through the ferry power, goes down to Marlin's, and we would add also to the additional lot, so there are no utility problems. And we do at the entrance here, the Jews have an existing fire item.
So you're looking to waive utility plan, drainage plan, street plans. Roadway construction and the street light, street light and street tree plantings.
I would point out, Mr. Chairman, I guess on the trees, that that is all wooded all along the existing proposed road.
What's on lot 8, Wobell, is there a dwelling on that lot?
Which lot is that?
Lot 8, well...
It's lot 1053.
Lot 1053 on map 8.
Map 8, lot 1053. Yeah.
Let's see, 1053.
It's the one that abuts the proposed lot, right off of Anthony's Way.
Well, Anthony's Way's a right-of-way, because they're private roadways here, 1053.
Yes, there is a lot there.
Is there a dwelling on that lot now?
Yes.
What do they use for access to get in and out of here? That little 10-foot way?
How do they get access there?
Just through this little 10-foot right-of-way right here.
Yeah.
So what's this 15-foot one here for service?
They use this one here.
They could. Oh, it says private. Could you, Mr. Doyle, could you explain to us, what does private road mean? Does that mean that this is actually owned by them, so these people are not allowed to use it? And this also says private? So who physically owns those?
Could I ask you to use the mic so we can get this recorded? Is the light on, on your mic, by the way?
Yeah.
Okay.
The two ways, one that's marked Anthony's, also known as Mayflower, and then the 15-foot private road. One is 10 feet wide, one is 15 foot wide, and they show up historically as private roads, and they are being used by some of the residences, I pointed out there. Map 1053 comes in off Anthony, and the most northerly, 1040, comes in off the 15-foot wide private way. And as to exactly what a butter's to that have rights, you know, I would suggest that anybody budding that has a right to use that, but, you know, that sometimes becomes a legal concern. We don't intend to...
It sure does, you know? For you to come in and use a statement like that, you know, it's a free-for-all, basically, that's what you're telling us.
We don't intend to...
How long has the dwelling been on 1053? I know it has nothing to do with this hearing, but...
I think it's an older...
Long time?
Yeah.
And they've always used that little 10-foot path, or that driveway to go in there?
There's nothing there, yeah. There's no town sewage up there, correct?
No, I believe so. So because you planned access through your own property, you don't have any research on those private ways, whether you have...
We have no intended use on the ways for this project.
The, one of the questions, was there's onsite sewer there? No set, no...
Looking at this, you know, excuse me, from way back, looks almost like this private street here. Okay, Mayflower Avenue was never constructed.
Mayflower is the Anthony's Way.
That's that 10-foot wide road.
Right.
It's already a pre-existing Mayflower.
Right.
It's an old structure.
Looks like there's originally some lots off of that, but a no kind of this parcel.
Yeah, it looks like at one time, it was all little, yeah, all little postage stamps at one time.
Yeah, they've been combined.
And they're all combined over the years. Wow.
Looks like the applicant... The applicant...
Yeah.
...bought all the little ones here. It's MR. 30. It is MR. 30. I guess the question that gets raised is, you know, allowing them to use the current right-of-way, how does that satisfy the frontage requirements based on the paper drawing of Cahoon Place or Marlin Way, whatever they decide? How does the board determine that that satisfies the need for the frontage?
What we've customarily done with small subdivisions like that is approve the new roadway layout and then waive construction of the roadway.
With the restriction of no further subdivision perpetuity, because otherwise, once you establish that roadway, technically, you can go in and cut that lot in two or three, whatever the zoning allows, because you know you have frontage on there.
Right.
So it's a compromise. You make the best of a bad situation, and you put a restriction, because if that road was created...
Right.
And they use it as frontage as Form A, you have no, you can't put any restrictions on a Form A.
Right.
Whereas this we can, and we waive it.
Mr. Barrett, I can't hear your conversation.
Hold your mic a little closer to you. I hate this mic. In a situation like this, since it's a Form C or a subdivision, we can condition what happens to these lots, like our condition will be no further subdivision in perpetuity. These 30,000 square feet, if that right-of-way or that road, that paper street is allowed, it gives them enough frontage to create maybe two more lots in... These thirty thousand square feet, if that right of way or that road, that paper street is allowed, it gives them enough frontage to create maybe two more lots in there. And this subdivision apostles of land were done, well, back in the fifties. And, um, you know, it's, uh, basically a compromise. Uh, like I said, if they came in and constructed the road first and came in and says, we want to farm A it, hearing not required, none of yous would be sitting here. And we couldn't condition it also, because by state law or by rights, they could do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I heard that, because I'm here in disagreement with, like, that road being exactly what it is. It's a little tiny dirt road.
Okay, we'll, we'll give you, uh, we'll give everyone an opportunity to speak on it shortly.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, anything more?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, with that, I will open it up to the public. What I would ask is that you come forward and identify yourself, speak into the mic, and, uh, there's a sign-in sheet there also, if you could.
Mr. Barrett, would you like me to go in front of Mrs. Agar?
Since you're up, we'll, uh.
Do you have a pen so I could sign into or no? Thank you.
Is there, is there a sign-in sheet there? It looks like it on the clipboard. Uh, it would, it would have to be if it's not constructed.
Mr. Baptiste and Mr. Barrett, my goodness.
Is that, is that, is that bad or good?
And, and Mr. Fitzgerald.
Yeah, I know. Mr. Fitzgerald gave you a bad time, but, um, yeah, I, I, I think that, um, in, in hindsight. Thank you, sir. I think that, uh, in hindsight.
Where, where do you, where do you live on this?
Thirty-seven Onset Avenue.
It's not shown on the plan.
Okay, come on, Mike, like you don't know where I live?
Yeah, I gotta, I gotta play Joe the Duncy, you know?
All right, all right. So anyways, that, um, I think that the, uh, as, the conformant to the road doesn't match up lot behind. We, we, in the town of Wareham, we're getting rid of that. And pork chop lots, we're getting rid of that. We'd totally get rid of that. That's, that's, that's a thing of the past. And, um, I, I, I think that this is, this is a, uh, just, it, it's, it's something that's going to be, be a huge problem down the road. I, I, I can't see this helping us. My, uh, I've talked to all my neighbors that, that are all abutters and they're all here tonight. Some of them, you know, they're, they're a little less, um, want to speak than I do, but they're, uh, you know, they're like, hey, you know, we, we don't want this. So this, this is, this is where we, where, where I'm at. And, uh, like I said, and the, the, the road could, could, if you took Onset's ladder one four, one four-two down the road, you got to back it all the way out. Because there's no place to turn it around. I mean, there, there's just, nothing good is going to come out of this whole situation.
Out of district as a brush breaker, they probably could make it through there, right?
Well, for a building fire, you need a ladder. I mean, Mr. Baptiste, you know that. So, um, you know, that, that, that's, uh, that's, that's one of the things that I, I spoke with some of my neighbors, and that's where, what, what we were all at, is that this is, this is a bad plan. And it, it's, it's not going to be good for the neighborhood. If anybody has anything they want to toss back at me, I'm willing to answer any questions.
Is your, so your biggest concern is public safety?
Well, well, no, it's not, well, well, yeah, always my biggest concern is public safety. But that, that's always the biggest concern. Um, you know, my other concerns are, yeah, I, I have the animals, I have kids, you know, I have stuff, you know, I mean, and the, the, the amount of recreation that would be coming behind us would, would be, you know, it would be too much. And besides the point, that they don't have the land back there to, to, to put fire trucks or anything else. I mean, even if it was anything else, a, 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 a dump truck or whatever, that, like, they would be backing up down the roads, I mean, against my property. And like I said, public surf, that, that's always the biggest. I mean, there's, there's not, not a bigger concern in the world. I mean, why, why, why don't you, I mean, I would say, ask Chief Goodwin or ask Chief McDuffie if, if there's a bigger concern.
I was just looking to see if they'd responded to, uh.
I can guarantee you there wouldn't be one.
How wide is that existing driveway that's?
I'm sorry?
How wide is that existing drive that's?
It starts out at about fifteen feet and it goes down to ten feet.
Mr. Baptiste has seen a couple of ladder trucks in his day. He, he, he would, he would definitely say that, uh, that's way too narrow for a ladder truck to be going down, especially Wareham.
Little thin, yeah.
Consider Onset's actually getting a new one, too, so it's going to be bigger.
Okay, have you? Anything else?
That's it, Mr. Barrett.
All right, thank you. Uh, I think, uh, your tag team wants to jump in now.
George, Mike, take care, guys.
My pen doesn't want to work. Can I sign that afterwards?
There's another one in the box.
Thank you.
I don't have any, uh. Well, here we go.
And the thing is, it doesn't appear to have any contact and ground. Well, like I said, it's, it's a win-win situation for everybody. Well, this is no sample, like I said, you know, it drops down, well, it's twenty feet, it drops down to the bottom with this building surplus to the top of the hill.
Uh, just as a note, Onset Fire did respond, and only in the matter of the name of the street. They thought Kahoon Place would be a, a duplicate name and suggested this secondary one, which is Marion Lane. I don't have any comments on whether that made it through the nine-one-one system. Uh, the other comment was from Conservation stating that, uh, no further review is required by Conservation since there's not within an area subject to their protection. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Brian O'Hern, eight Kahoon Road. And I had a question, um, this was going to be zoned in M, is it M thirty?
MR thirty.
MR thirty, what does that allow for?
Multiple residential allows for just that, multi-family on a thirty thousand square foot lot.
Like condos or things like that?
Duplex.
A duplex or a condo?
Could it be duplex or even more than a duplex?
Uh, I'd have to double-check the square footage, but I would say, yes, you could get more than one, uh.
Oh, he's got fifty-one thousand, he's forty-five thousand.
You could get more than one on that acreage.
Say multifamily with, like, three of or, or.
Off the top of my head, I couldn't quote it, so.
And they, um, also have a forty-foot wide proposed road. Kahoon itself is only eighteen feet.
That is a roadway layout. Uh, the pavement would not actually be forty feet wide if it were to be constructed. I think if you checked, uh, I don't know how old Kahoon Street is, but this, the layout is probably wider than what you see in pavement.
Okay, yeah, the pavement's eighteen on there. Yeah, my only concern is if you're putting that size road in there, it's not going to be two single-family dwellings. You're going to turn into a bigger project, um, with multiple.
That was sort of the concern that, um, Mr. Baptiste voiced earlier, was to use the existing roadway without constructing a subdivision roadway. It would be conditioned as to how much development they could do. If we do, you know, if, if construction were to evolve into a multifamily or future subdivision, it would have to do so with the construction of the roadway. Not this, uh, path or, or private driveway that it is now.
So that would mean they could only build on the second lot because there's always, already an existing house on the first, the red parcel, I believe it is?
Right.
They could only build one family home on the green?
Well, that hasn't been determined yet, but that could well be a condition of the, of the approval.
Okay, thank you.
That condition could always carry through and go along with this. You're well building the road.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
And no further subdivision of, um, lot two? Lot two. I want to make sure it's a lot two.
Uh, table of principal use.
As I asked that, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
Hey, I had one more question. Exactly what, and I, I know my, my neighbors here, we're all looking to see what, what exactly are they trying to build here? Are they trying to build a single-family house? Or are they trying to build a, an actual subdivision? That's what we're trying to find out.
It's, it's zoned for, um, a duplex lot in that zoning.
So, so.
The maximum, um, a lot of homes can be, there would be a duplex.
So there'd be one duplex and?
Yeah, that's the most.
I guess the question is, have you plans for anything, any construction at this time, or are you just looking to?
The plan is to build a single-family.
Mm-hmm.
Home and build it on spec and sell it. But, uh, my understanding is, in that zone, um, it, it doesn't want to carry a duplex. You need thirty thousand square feet with a hundred and fifty-foot street frontage.
Forty-five, forty-five thousand square feet for duplex.
Oh, and, okay.
Which, we're looking at fifty-one.
We have fifty-one.
So, Mike, what we're talking about?
Technically, it, technically, yeah, he could put, he could apply for a duplex on that lot. And technically, they can knock down the other dwelling on lot two with ninety thousand square feet and put a duplex on it also. The, the thing is, if, if this, if this did, if we did approve this subdivision, we would definitely put conditions on it that it would be a single-family in perpetuity and no further subdivision in perpetuity. If, if they did come back, no way in hell, they would have to go through another plan and redo the road up to standards and this and that.
So, at, at this stage in the game, but they would still have to, I mean, because the road would definitely does not, does not come close to standard.
The, the road couldn't support, couldn't support another dwelling in there. I, I, I'm amazed that there's a ten-foot wide road serviced in that house in the back that's basically landlocked with no frontage.
Exactly, well, and that was why I, I had brought up the simple fact that, like, that, that, the, uh, the, the road did not come up to standard. And it was a, they wanted to build a lot in the back, and they wanted to build basically what's called a pork chop lot in the back.
Yeah.
So, that, you know, that, that was why I had brought that up. It's, it's not that I, I hate the, I hate everybody and hate the whole idea of it. It's just a matter of, if, if everybody's going to help be held to the standard.
Right, one of the reasons what we did in this town was when we tried to get rid of the pork chop lots, is we come with a hundred and fifty-foot diameter shape factor. So you have to have frontage within the hundred and fifty, fifty-foot shape factor. By them creating that road or that paper street with a hammerhead, they have a hundred and fifty-foot frontage per lot. So the, the hundred and fifty-foot fits in there, so you don't have a, a twenty-foot wide road going down and then it balls out. I think Middleborough calls some, uh, uh, they got a name for that. But it's pork chop lot, basically, so I got fifty foot on the street, which is legal frontage, and I go back and it bulbs out.
And then it bolts out to, to.
Right.
Above the five thousand square, square foot.
And, and the thing is, by rights, he, he, he has the right to subdivide this land, but with a, with a subdivision like this, we can condition it that we can limit what he does with it. So, uh, I, I, I see him smiling there, says, you know, his rights to put a duplex in there, not, no way in heck with this, this little driveway that you have in there, it just wouldn't support it.
Single-family is fine.
Yes.
Yeah, single-family, well, with some modifications. I'm not, I'm not saying right now that we're going to say that gravel road you have, have, have now in place.
Yeah.
Is, is strong enough to support another dwelling in there. Uh, I might, we might want to take a, a road, a ride down there and look at it.
Sure.
You know, you might have to widen the road to support some kind of, um, a gravel turnaround or whatever, if there was a disaster back there, and it's not just for your two houses, you got that other house on, um, ten fifty-three. You know, that really gets me concerned when you got a ten-foot driveway going into service a house. The gas truck can't even get in there and deliver gas.
Well, I can tell you right now, I can guarantee you, I got a little bit of experience, ladder one would have to drive a couple, a hundred feet, a, a, a five hundred feet out of that driveway. Because Onset's ladder one could not make it down there and turn around.
No.
So, and, and you know that.
Yep.
So, so that, I, I just want to know what, what the intentions were. So the intentions are a single-family.
Yeah.
And, and.
What was, what was that?
I was just going to kind of lay it out for you when you're done.
All right, yeah, well, well, I mean, I, I just, you know, I, I want on the record that it's, it's going to be, if, if it goes through, it's going to be a single-family home. And it's going to be down, it's going to be to the left of the house, between the railroad tracks and the, and the house. Is that, is that what, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, where we're at. Let, let me address the pork chop shape there first. When you talk about the lot that we're creating here in the green, when you look at this area, that's incorporated in the lot, because basically, there's nothing else to do with that property. So it's really not an intent to create a pork chop lot without, the lot looks like this. And, uh, we are proposing, we'd be willing to go along with one dwelling and waive, um, in perpetuity the rights to a duplex on that lot, which we would be entitled to otherwise. And, uh, I, I want to say the same here, but I have to check the model of the property owner to make sure that he agrees with that.
I'm sure he would.
I, I don't know of any intention to, you know, to do anything over there. And, uh, there's, there's plenty of area here to widen the gravel road a little bit for emergency vehicles to access and out of there. And, you know, just kind of dwarf some of the ones that are already dealing with that issue.
Yeah, I, I think the board would be looking for, I don't know if perpetuity is the right word, but if there were any further subdivision, the roadway would have to be constructed.
Thank you, George, and thank you, Mike.
Anything, anybody else wish to?
That's not good when neighbors are letting the other one go first.
This is on. Hi, my name's Kevin Reagan. I own, uh, M six and M seven. Let me see here, the map. My, my lot M seven would border this proposed road at some future date. And it's, uh, basically, um, as someone mentioned here, is that road is, uh, proposed at a forty-foot width minimum. And Kahoon Road is, again, only eighteen feet from, from each pavement, uh, for the width. And, uh, it, it's basically, we've been living there for twenty-eight years. It just seems like it, it's, it's terrible that I would be looking at a road. It just seems like it, it's terrible that I would be looking at a road now instead of birds coming out, you know, off of the trees. And I, I just don't like the idea, along with the safety factors that would be involved that was just mentioned, that, uh, you know, houses would be put, put in the back here. I also, I, I have doubts, th- this proposal here for, uh, what's this, lot one? Uh, you have that listed at fifty-one thousand, uh, uh, square feet. Then you have a lot right next to it. It, it seems like this whole plan is laid out to be a lot more than, than, than what it is. And that's another concern going forward. It just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. You know, I'd be looking at this road, uh, it would basically abut my driveway. Uh, we have, uh, there's trees that may be there. I've been taking care of part of that land by cutting the lawn and, uh, you know, even plowing, um, you know, shoveling the, the driveway. That may be part of, uh, uh, Mr. Schwartz's property for a long time. He, from my understanding, he just moved here, moved in about two thousand nine and he had acquired all, all this property. That would be one of my concerns is that, you know, we've been enjoying the good life, but I guess, you know, it's kinda tough to, to stop progress. But, I mean, at, at the risk of the other neighbors, I, I just don't, you know, I don't think it's right. Now, it's my understanding that, that you guys would require a forty-foot minimum. What would be, what would realistically that be? I mean, would that be like, like Kahoon Road is eighteen foot of pavement? I mean, is that like twenty foot, twenty foot? And the other thing too, I mean, you have this long road going in there at some point in time. Is there gonna be required lights going up? Because it could be a duplex or a multifamily a- as it's zoned right now? You know, are we gonna be looking at lights all night long?
A number of things. First of all, that's what's been proposed, uh, which is a paper street, as they put it. A, a roadway, a layout suitable to make a roadway.
Right.
But not being built, using the existing drive to service both lots. Under, under that circumstance, with a wa, if we were to grant a waiver for that, then these lots would be limited as to what could be done. They'd be conditioned to either a single, single-family on each piece or something similar to that. If they, if they were to come back at a later date and try to further subdivide or something beyond the conditions for this, then they would have to construct an approved roadway.
Right.
With the possibility of, you've got the possibility of four, maybe five lots being created there. That would be a minor, remember the definition? Which, which would be roughly fifteen, eighteen feet of pavement with sidewalks and?
Yeah, sidewalks and things of that. But, I mean, would they have to, would they help, so if, if they do a, a site that big, would there have to be lights that were put up on that road, like streetlights and all kinds of wonderful stuff that we'd have to be looking at all night long?
What we've done lately is adopted a driveway lantern covenant, which means each piece, each residential unit would have a driveway lamp, lantern that would stay on during the, during, uh,
See, the problem is, all these houses are so close to.
Not, not your conventional streetlights that you're used to.
Yeah, see, all these houses are so close together, and you know, it's, it's very typical of, of, of Onset, I guess. And it, it's, it's, it seems to be, when something like this is happening, it just doesn't seem to be there's, there's enough room. You know, everything's gonna be happening in the back. There's railroads, a railroad track behind there. If, if they do start renting out property, if somebody, a developer goes in and buys this as a subdivision, you know, the train of thought may be totally different and something else might be proposed. And just like a never-ending ballot, uh, battle, I suppose. The, the other thing too, is that you have these, uh, roads like Anthony, Anthony Way, you have it listed as private. From my understanding, that those were also right-of-way, right-of-way. So if, let's say for instance, I don't think anything's planned right now for town sewerage to come down Kahoon Road. What's stopping this person over here where this proposed plan is saying, well, jeez, it's just too far to go down here. I wanna use this right-of-way of Anthony's Way to bring my town sewerage. And wouldn't it be, wouldn't it cost a lot less than go, going all the way around to this other road? I mean, you, you only have a ten-foot wide road and Jared lives at the end of it. Yeah, I'm sure that would create a lot of problems for you if someone decided to.
That would require some research. This, this piece of property may not have any rights to that private way. That, you'd have to research the deeds on the various properties and see if, if rights were ever granted to this piece of property.
Because it goes right out, it goes right out to those, to those lots that were proposed.
The thing is, George, looking at that nineteen fifty plan, those lots in the front and the lots in the back, at one time, the way it was laid out, they might have rights from the back to use that way.
Yeah, it looks like originally there was.
Somebody has to do some research on this.
See, I, I looked, I looked at the town map and I, what I did was I, I, there's a little tool that, that you press and it showed the central lines of the road. Kahoon Road lit up, Anthony's Way, and there was also this fifteen-foot wide private road, indicating to me that it looked to be a right-of-way. But again, I don't know.
Well, I, just, you know, we just glanced roughly at the, uh, the nineteen fifty layout of all them lots. You can see there was, uh, a good example is, uh, lot ten fifty-three, Mr. LaValle's lot. There was three separate little lots in there, they probably were fifty by seventy-five at one time. And somebody has to do some research in the deeds. Those ancient deeds might say they have a right to pass and repass across that property to access the property in the back.
Right.
That opens up another whole can of worms.
Yeah. So, so this, 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 this road here, uh, I mean, it would be a proposed road and it wouldn't happen immediately, but if it is proposed and it is on a plan and it's approved as a proposed plan, then it could be done without notice, couldn't it? Or would there, would it also have to go through a hearing like we're, we're here again?
Uh, where there is no, uh, construction, there's no profiles issued with this plan.
It would have to come back before the board.
You'd have to come back in here, whether it would be subject to a public hearing.
So that, that, because I have other concerns about that too. Uh, you know, where it starts from the road, the elevation is zero. And then as you move out, it becomes like a cliff type thing. And it, it can drop, drop down at like fifteen feet.
Well, one place I see twenty.
Yeah, so, okay. So once, once you start, you're, and that would be abutting my land. And so I'm afraid that there could be a washout if there's not, not drainage or it's done properly. Are they gonna come into my land to try to, uh, grade that out? I don't know. Yeah, there's, there's a leaching field in my backyard, is that gonna be affected? I, I don't know.
In this particular, what they've asked for with the waiver and using the existing roadway, it would have little or no effect as, as the way it functions today. If the, if they were to build a subdivision roadway, it would have to be self, self-sustaining. They would have to, uh, take care of the runoff on site. They couldn't run water off into your property.
Yeah, it's, so it'd have to come back to the board and it all would have to be looked at and we'd have to. The, the other.
As far as you're concerned over town sewer, uh, that's a whole different can of worms. They, that's something that, you know, easements would have to be granted and it's, that's a whole nother process.
But if they start, what I'm saying is.
Beyond the scope of this board.
Yeah, if, if they start digging on Anthony's Way that, and going over to that house, that could create a big problem because I don't believe that there would be enough room for, for Jared to get into his driveway.
Past, past practice, past practice would say that they wouldn't even run a sewer line out there for one house. It would be up the applicant to do that if they needed it.
Okay. The, the other thing is, the existing driveway, that gravel driveway, you have, uh, I guess, existing water as well as proposed water going down to the, I guess, the, you call it a subdivision. Okay, EW and PW. Now, since this is, they're calling this existing gravel drive. Since there is real no right-of-way, uh, or may, maybe there is, if Anthony's Way is figured out to be a right-of-way or, I, I don't think this private road, this lot was just purchased to stop that from being a right-of-way. Shouldn't something be called a right-of-way? I, I mean, for utilities or things that, shouldn't it be considered by the town a right-of-way?
It is designated as a, um, parcel B, access and utility easement.
Okay, so, so is that considered to be a right-of-way? I mean, there, there are laws and thing, legalities, I guess, involved with right-of-ways.
That, that little branch from Kahoon Street, that little pink section there, that is part of your?
The owner holds title to that. That's part of the property. And again, because when you create, um, the roadway that we're proposing not to construct, it cuts off that little piece, so we then show that as a separate parcel B and call it a utility and access easement because the buyer of this lot would want to use that across the gravelway. And there is no, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no grand scheme to do any, had a big developing of the back here.
No, no.
And, uh, you know, when you see private way and maid flower, also known as the Anthony's and the other private way.
Private versus public is, um, as you know, being designated from the municipal point of view. Who has rights in that roadway or any roadway is a whole different matter. Could be a private road with many people having rights in the roadway. As a professional, I suspect in anybody abutting that roadway certainly has rights in the roadway.
But it has no street name, I guess.
And we have no intent to, uh, run any sewer lines or anything else down that roadway.
Well, there's a proposed, the water line, there's a proposed water. There's an existing water, proposed water, EW and PW going down that gravel road.
Right, I'm talking about Anthony's. You, you mentioned bringing sewer down there?
Oh, yeah, I did, yeah, I'm sorry, okay. Yeah, uh, well, if, if it was sold and at some point in time, I, I guess, that the owner said, no, jeez, I wanna go down Anthony's Way, I don't wanna go all the way here because it'll cost less. I mean, I, I think that could be a possibility, I'm not sure how all that works out as far as the town sewerage goes.
To use either one of those roads, it wouldn't meet criteria for any subdivision. The, uh, one thing you should keep in mind, you could, without the engineering in front of me, you could easily get four lots back there, just, just a casual observation.
Oh, exactly, that's what I'm so afraid of this.
So just asking for two is, is kind of a godsend to you.
Mr. Franklin explained himself very well about the safety aspect of this whole thing and it's not conducive to any of that.
But it, of course, would not be to our advantage to be here tonight asking for two if we wanted to go forward and construct the road.
Michael, do you have a question?
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
If I could please, could you, it's not on your plan, so I'm just wondering, could you show us where Mr. Reagan's house is on map eight, lot six or seven? And could you also tell us what is on lot M nine under, and I think it's owned by Kenneth and Diane Madigan? Is there a home on that parcel?
No, no, it's, it's, it's not a buildable lot.
So that's vacant, and where is Mr. Reagan's house on these lots?
It, it, it abuts the road, the proposed road. It's M, uh.
So you are on lot M seven?
Yeah, my house is located on M six, my driveway is M seven.
Okay, but your house is on M six?
Yeah, it's on M six, correct. Yeah, and it's just, it's just so close, it's just.
In your driveway?
Yeah, it ju, it's just.
I mean, it shows that your lot's a hundred and two feet, um, wide. So your driveway comes in on the far corner and then swoops into the house? Is that what you're saying? On lot M seven? You said your driveway's on lot M seven, but you said it actually, you think it actually abuts the proposed forty-foot?
Yeah, that, that's what, what they're trying to do is keep that road as close to my property as possible from, from the looks of things, so they can make that corner around.
My, my question for you though is, you show a hundred and two feet of width in your lot.
Okay.
So your driveway starts where?
It's, oh, okay. It, it probably just beyond the width of my driveway where there, uh, where my borderline is. So it's, it, it doesn't exactly touch it, but the road would be right, very close to it.
Did you have a garage on that other parcel?
No, I, no, I don't. No, uh, I got a small shed that really needs to be, really needs to come down, but.
But the road's right up against it though.
Against the driveway?
The road is right, it's, it's pretty, they're trying to make it as close as possible so they can get, get around it, looks like.
Your driveway, um? Okay, but that's a hundred and two feet wide. Your driveway's a hundred and two feet wide?
No, 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 it's a, there's two lots. The, the two lots are a hundred and two feet.
They're both fifty-foot wide lots, yeah.
I think it's actually a hundred and two. Yeah, a hundred and two feet wide, right, a hundred and two point two.
They keep on hammering them, it's a, like, they can't make their road a non-conforming, it's a non-conforming road. They cannot make that a conforming road.
This person wants, this person owns this, they won't sell to them or they're asking too much money to. That's why they don't want it. They're from Middleborough. So they can't go, so that's why they have to go the road this direction.
Could we keep the conversations to a minimum, please, so we can continue? I think what we'll need is a, a roadway plan, so we can have something to waive. You really haven't given us anything there other than the layout itself.
Now, would that roadway plan, does, does that include drainage and things of that nature?
Customarily, yes.
Okay.
I think in the past, that's what we.
See, this is where my length is, right, that's small.
What's the overall length there?
About four hundred and thirty-two feet, I think, centerline length.
And if you use the gravel drive, the driveway for the second lot is gonna be determined at construction, is that what?
Yeah.
I got, I got one question before we go too far here. I'm looking up at your locus over here, uh, private road, fifteen foot wide. Parcel A, Parcel A's gonna be, uh, if this, if this happened, Parcel A's gonna be transferred to, uh, lot ten forty?
Say that once more?
Parcel A.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen to Parcel A?
It's gonna be conveyed to ten forty.
Okay, he's right now, he's looking at your locus. This parcel here goes out and it fans out and it goes over fifteen foot right-of-way through there, that private road. Look on the locus up there.
Yeah, that's correct.
That, that's, so that private road is part of this parcel also.
Right.
Mr. Baptiste, I got a question on that one. You know, I mean, like, we're, we're trying to get rid of the whole pork chop and in-lot thing in Wareham and we're kinda like running into it here.
Yeah, well, you, you do have the shop factor, the shape factor on the, uh, on the newly created, on lot one. Well, you do have the shop factor, the shape factor on the newly created, on lot one. And as you pointed out, the shape, the pork shop shape, as it were, is out of necessity. You really can't do much with it if you're going to access it the way you propose.
And, Mr. Barrett, we're kind of going with the conformity of the, you know, the road in, the road out. You know, we, you know, we got to stick to a plan on this right here. And I think that if we go further, any further, with any of this craziness that, you know, like, we have got to have a plan here, there's got to be a plan in place. If ladder 421 can't make it in, ladder 421 can't make it out.
The lapses stadium perpetuity.
There you go, there you go. Buy you a new one, unfortunately. I've had too much experience there. So, I mean, I, we don't want, in my opinion, I don't think we want to start, you know, like, making some crazy precedence that we're not going to keep up to for everybody else. And I think that in this case right here, this is definitely a case of we're overstretched our boundaries, and I think that, you know, whatever we can afford to this person, we can afford to them, but we definitely don't want to start stretching ourselves to putting ourselves in the hole down the line. Because other people are going to come up to this board and they're going to say, well, you gave it to this person, why not me? Mr. Fitzgerald, you agree on that, or?
I think that this proposal has some merit, but I think that there has to be some conversation to determine exactly what the plan is moving forward. Some of the concerns I see are safety, getting the ladders up there, I mean, there's already an existing drive, so if...
There's already an existing eight-foot drive.
Right, so if lot two, if that house goes on fire tomorrow, somehow the fire truck's trying to get up there.
Yeah, well, the only way anything's going to happen is if they come by train.
Yeah, okay.
So, because of the railroad tracks behind them.
And I'm looking at, you know, as Mr. Baptiste just pointed out, on the locus, it shows that the small parcel A, which is being transferred to Harry and Margaret Harbach.
Harbach, yep.
Currently shows two sheds on it. I'm not quite sure who sheds those are, but it would be nice to know who.
They're Harry's, he's here. They're Harry's. Quiet down.
So I just, at this point, I think I'd like to hear a little more from Mr. Doyle and the applicant in reference to what their future plans are, and just so that we have a great understanding for the neighbors.
Are you taking our stuff? You can have this one if you want.
Do you have the 1952 plan?
Yeah, I have that.
I was born in 68, George, come on, you really? Mike, he throws that one at me, right? Hold on. I don't got that with me, George.
Yes. Yes, this one.
These two loans here, this original subdivision, these people are guaranteed.
Are you one trying to buy the parcels?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
We're trying to stop that, yeah.
Marlin, in the discussion, before I used that word.
They never used them.
He don't want the same thing.
My kids, my kids love them.
By having this here, he can make his money, he could do a college, then give himself 150 feet on it all the same. The thing is, these people, these people are protected, because they're hired, it's not a lot to their level.
I hear.
He's going to be the low point.
The shed, nobody ever...
We never knew this boundary because it isn't posted. All the others are pretty much posted.
Well, let me take a little, because we've done this in the past, roadway construction, let me look and see what we had for information.
Well, it's on the same elevation, the driveway always came down, it used to go around...
Yeah, we have a description of...
But I stopped that because I relocated my set.
You know, compacted gravel.
In order to build my porch.
Yeah, something like that.
I put it circling the front. But it used to go around the house. And it always appeared to be, oh, there was some little shed I expanded on it, and this shed was a little shed that I just reloaded. And I always knew this one was on the right of way. Private way, right of way, each of this one, map or something calls it something different. Nobody's ever disputed any of that. But notice, this 54 one has no name. That was Mayflower, that. Well, the people that lived here before Jared put up and changed it to Anthony's Way. Because, or whatever, yeah, Anthony's Way, because that was his name. So that was Anthony Andrews who owned the house, probably, yeah. And, we bought this in 1980, so I've been there since February of 82, 81. So I've been a while. And this was just a bit same thing.
Is there anyone?
Can I speak, maybe?
Sure.
All right, my name is Harry Harbach, and I own 1040. So my concerns are slightly different in that I'm looking to buy a parcel of the land that is on an elevation the same level as mine before it drops off into the pit. The green is all in, we refer to the pit, because it was a sand pit at one time.
Man, there were some good potties down here in the olden days, I could tell you.
Yes, there were, and I probably called the cops on it, but...
You probably was down here drinking with us, don't come with that.
Well, that was before I moved here. So, one of the things I'm asking is, this whole thing going to hold up my transaction? Are these separate issues, or is it all one? Can we discuss one without the other, or?
Well, I don't...
Yeah, maybe you can address that.
Sure, I mean, that's...
The alternative is, of course, that we could come before the board with an air and our, just lobbing off that unbuildable lot without effectively changing anything else.
That parcel, parcel. Parcel.
We could do that in an air and our form, but, you know, we wanted to do it as part of the subdivision because we knew we were going to be welcomed and you were going to...
And the shed you were talking about?
What is the square footage of lot 1040, do you know?
It was an unknown pattern at the time.
Lot 1040, what's the square footage of that?
I'd have to check, I don't have that with me.
I probably have it right here.
Your parcel's 13-275, I just wonder what the lot itself is.
Mine is 35,719 square feet. And the little parcel A that you're talking about is, it's in my paper here, 13...
13-275?
Yeah. It's 13-275.
So in other words, if you want to really, if you really want to piss off your neighbors, I don't usually use language like that, you can join that parcel of your property, knock your house down, and put a duplex up.
Of course, all of us can do that, but, you know, I'll wait till it burns down and then I'll build it.
The fire truck couldn't get in here because the road was too narrow.
Exactly. But, yeah, could, everybody can do that, you know?
Well, the fire truck still can't go down his road to his house anyways, because he lives all the way in the back.
Well, he can come by rail.
Now, you talked about that, that private way, roadway, right of way, almost everything that we have. In my deed, I have the right to take my team down the right of way to Dana's Way so that I have access to the cove. Now, how I'm going to get there, I don't know, and I don't have a team, but I have a right in my deed to do that.
You've got a team behind you.
All right, yeah, well, I'll hook them up the other way.
I asked for the head and those two to be pulling the slides.
Right, and you know what Dana's Way is? It's the little road that goes down to the bed. All right, so we have it deeded to us. How we get there, probably down Cahoon Road, but, you know, and nobody uses either of those roads except for the people who need them. Mine, for the 15-foot, because I do it, now, that doesn't mean that either of my two neighbors are precluded from it. You know, and Anthony's Way, or AKA Mayflower Ave., as it was known, is the only access to Jared's house. And nobody has ever used it except for people who visit Jared. And nobody uses mine except for people that visit me. And I've been there 33 years, so... So, my question was, are those two separate issues, or are they connected?
I think as a practical matter, I think they would continue to combine the action, make one filing and...
Mm-hmm, for convenience sake, but no bearing on, one, there's nobody here contesting. I don't know, is anybody contesting me purchasing that parcel?
I think, if I could answer that part.
The only way that that would be legally created is this format would be an approval of the subdivision, which obviously is not going to happen at this point. So we could create a different plan and format, you guys can discuss that, and submit that, which is a much simpler process, just to convey that parcel to you.
Wouldn't that be an 81X?
Yep.
The, what would we be looking for now? We want a...
If they're going to come and take that blue section or purple, whatever color you want to call it, and take that parcel off of this piece of property here, they could handle that as a form A. That's just a subdivision of land to take it, it's not buildable law, it's creating a parcel.
Well, I understand that, but as a practical matter, they might as well do it all as one.
That's understood.
Filing, but yeah, yeah.
Is included to be part of this, is what I...
If they change their plans...
We could resubmit it as a separate entity, if they want so want to.
Right, you know? Because it just looks like there's too much opposition.
What are we looking for for information?
I would just want to make clear to Harry that that's an issue that would have to be discussed with the property owner. I can't make that decision.
But I'm just wondering, it doesn't have to be part of this, it is right now.
There's a slight financial issue.
Yes, I understand.
Martin might not be able to convey that to you to his taxes of right current.
Mm-hmm, and it won't be done...
So in order to do that, we have to sell the other piece, single lot to me, so we have enough funds to close on the, bring his taxes current so we can get a release.
From his, a mortgage holder as well as the town.
If that was going to happen all at the same time, we could have put a condition in the subdivision of this property contingent on, you know, in other words, to transfer it, contingent on everything was put in place, everything was up and working, set a piecemeal in it.
There's no real reason to make it, you know, creating that parcel, you wouldn't have to make that... I mean, you could, but there's no reason to make that part of the...
Yeah, you could, but he was seeing some... Yeah, okay, yeah.
I mean, we have no control over the price or the financing or anything like that, so...
Price or meets and bounds.
Meets and bounds, we do have control.
But there's no problem with the layout of that, and the question was, does it change the roadway or end it, or, you know? It's not clear in any document that I have where it ends anyway. And it's not clear in any document that I've found or seen that it provides access guarantee to any property behind me. Now, it doesn't preclude it, but it doesn't guarantee it. And none of his deeds for any one of these original parcels, prior to this design, does it say that they have access. And I live at 17 Cahoon Road, which for half the time I lived there was 19 Cahoon Road. And the town decided to change my street number, you know, so that they could subdivide the property on the other side of me. And that never went to any board or any hearings that I ever recall. And they changed mine and another person's out on the street on the other side of me's street number so that they could split the property next to me and give them 19 and 20, because it used to be 21A and B. And, you know, that was all done, and the post office notified me. And I came to the town and they said, no, you've always been 17. And I said, well, whose taxes was I paying? And then I got a letter saying, your number has been changed. Things can be done evidently. Is this not going to go through, or? Or is everybody satisfied that if they use this road, they can build one house and make it a contingency, that no duplexes or multi-dwellings be put in there? Is that within the jurisdiction of this board and the agreement of the purchasers?
What I would be opposing right this minute would be, I will look at other similar projects to see what we got in the way of proposed roadway layout, to see how much information is required there. I don't have it in front of me. And also, the specs that we use for the gravel driveway. I believe, going off memory, I'm thinking 16 feet wide, compacted gravel, but I want to double-check that before I... go any further with that. Is there anything board members looking for for information?
Like to look at, you know, some copies of some ancient deeds. I, I really. Well, I'm just telling you when I, when I, you know, got a funny suspicion.
I, I would ask that, um, Mr. Doyle, when he brings the additional information on the existing drive and the specifications that you share with him, that he address the issue that was brought up by the neighbors of the safety factor where there could be a turnaround up here for emergency equipment. If, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman.
The last thing I had is Mr. Doyle, Mr. Fitzgerald, Mr. Baptiste, and Mr. Barrett. Keep in mind, those three last things that I said was the conformity to the, the, the drive, the pluck chop lot and the lot in the rear, which the town aware him is trying to get rid of. But th- those are the only three things that I wanted to make sure that, you know, that you guys just had in the back of your mind when you're making a decision, that's all. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just point out to make clear for my client here that the more that he needs to provide in the way of roadway profiles, drainage, utility plans, the less incentive there is for him to ask for a waiver of construction of that roadway.
Um. Let's see, yeah.
Can you repeat that one more time?
I'm just looking through, what, who's the actual applicant again?
Mr. Golly here.
Didn't just come across the deed, so. Want to spell that for me?
Uh, Melvin Golly, G-A-U-L-E-Y.
Mr. Schutz is the property owner. Which is on the plan.
Okay. Make sure I spell things right.
It's in the application, but I don't see it on.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I.
Marlin Schutz. Schutz.
I don't see that on this.
Everybody, everybody says that, we're a little different.
Yeah.
Mr. Doyle, I don't see that on the plan. I know you referenced it.
He's listed in the deed as administrator of the estate?
Oh, I only have that one. Okay. Okay. I, I brought it over there to you, Mr. Doyle. That's all we have.
I don't have it on my plan. It's a reduced plan. It's got, Mr. Golly is the, is the applicant. Oh, property owner, here.
What are, what is the owner's intentions with his parcel? Of ninety thousand square feet? What are his intentions?
That would be on, on the whole, whole, whole piece of property.
Limited to two.
One new, one new resident.
Mr. Chairman. Do it eliminate the danger of.
Right. Correct. That's, yes, sir.
So the, uh.
Mr. Chairman, basically absolutely adhere with their.
Didn't come up very well. I think those two.
Mr. Doyle was referencing he, he'll be talking to the property owner to find out his intentions of both parcels. As Mr. Golly's referenced, his intention is if he were able to get a building permit, uh, I mean, a buildable lot for lot one, he would put a single-family residence there. And, uh, Mr. Doyle said he would get some information from the property owner currently on what the intentions are for both parcels so that those could be referenced in any order of conditions that, uh, the board may see fit.
Both lots, lots.
Which would encompass lot one and lot two.
I don't see any comment on the secondary proposed street name, kind of a minor issue, but I'll see if there's any problems with that. I know we do have Marion Road in town. Whether they have a problem with Marion Lane, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think they were, um, I thought what Mr. Sampson was saying was that they were satisfied with the second name.
I see they only commented on the, uh.
On the first one.
On the first one. Yes, sir.
How we doing? Jared LaValle, floor Anthony's Way.
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, I just got my paper today stating to be here. Luckily, I talked to my neighbors a few days before to figure out kind of what's going on. I do have a couple of concerns. We're here with, uh, this plan in front of us and everything else, and why don't we have answers from the landlord on what he wants to do with that piece? Why, why make it into a subdivision? Why not just split it evenly so that only one building can be built on it? You know, these are all questions that I figured most planning boards are, you know, people that are coming forth in front of a planning board would have answers to. And here you are saying you don't know what the homeowner wants to do with that property.
So what I'm saying is, this is Mr. Golly who intends to purchase the new lot that we're creating, and he intends to build one residential dwelling. I don't know of anything, uh, any plans that the current owner has. To my knowledge, he doesn't have any plans to go any further than what's there.
Okay.
But I can't speak for him. He's not here. Obviously, I have to talk to him. I think he was called to work tonight. Is that right?
Yeah, can I, I purchased that piece of property about, about eight years ago. I liked the, uh, the layout and everything else like that. Um, there was no property behind me, uh, as of when I moved in. All of a sudden, uh, I got commercial vehicles going down back. I got storage containers out in the back sitting there. Um, and if we were to extend that drive, I'd be staring at a nice, ugly road, even worse than it is right now. Um, you know, I didn't, I didn't think of the safety factors like somebody had brought up before. Not a big deal, and I'm not sitting here trying to tell somebody else what to do with their piece of land. But before anything goes on, I think everybody should get their, their ducks and roll a little bit better and, and stated on paper of what people plan on doing with this. You know, it's all of a sudden, last minute, everybody gets this, hey, show up tomorrow, we're doing this. Nobody has a clue of what's going on, so, you know, this, probably a good portion of this could have been, uh, could have been dealt with differently, and, uh, I don't think you'd have as many people sitting here if you had everything laid out.
I think it is.
Yeah, I, I think it's laid out. And, Mr. Chairman, it, it's zone residential. We're here for two residential lots. And we would, um, you know, that would support building another residence. So I, I, I don't know at this stage what more you would lay out.
Yeah, exactly.
We're not proposing any commercial use.
Often, oftentimes, you know, most of the time we get a subdivision, we don't get much more input than the, the capability of a single-family home being built on the lot, if that. What we do see is the requirements needed to create frontage and create a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's what this plan is suggesting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
February fourth. Our next meeting is March tenth. I would be looking for a motion to continue the public hearing to that date. I know I have some research to do. Is there anything we need from the applicant?
Uh, Mr. Doyle, you will be speaking to the property owner to find out the, uh, his intentions for lot two?
I'm sure.
And we know what Mr. Golly's intentions are.
I'm sure Marlin's is to keep it as a single-family lot as well.
Mm-hmm.
I know it is.
Okay. Okay. Uh, would someone care to make a motion?
I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we continue the public hearing to March.
What's the date?
Tenth.
March tenth.
Mr. Chairman, are we, um, were, were you going to get back to me prior to then, or how did you want it?
Yeah, I will, I will forward you the.
Because if, if you're, if you do that and, uh, you're looking for some data, I don't know that March tenth is that realistic a date for me to be able to provide it for you?
Uh, well, I guess it would depend on what.
What you ask for, right?
Let's keep it simple. You can do it.
If that's the case, if by any reason you're, you're not prepared at that time, we can continue again, but.
Okay.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Uh, just for, well, this process will be continued to March tenth at seven o'clock.
Mr. Doyle, would it be all right if I visit that property at some point?
Uh, for you folks that have come in tonight, if you want, if you want to check with the planning department prior to the tenth, just to make sure everything's on board. Otherwise, there'll be no further notification.
Okay, because most of us didn't get it until this morning.
Yeah.
So we, we had no idea what it was about.
Okay.
Why do? Oh, we run. Try to hide, you know, keep, uh.
He hides good.
That's all you can do, man. Yeah?
Yeah, I keep my dad, my, my mom laws.
Keep him out of trouble.
Shouldn't he be fixing the sand or something?
Oh, that's terrible stuff.
Yeah, well, just send it to the shop and just tell them to go weld something, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, it is one of those, you know, we're rolling the wood.
Oh, good, that's good. That's all we can do.
So, you been all right?
Oh, yeah. When you get old, you just kind of go along with the punches, huh? Yeah, see, I, they told me I can't, I can't curse. He's the one that keeps everybody straight here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, I, I try, I was sitting there. I, I, I've been in front of this family with way too many cancers, like the ZDA way too many times. Thank you, but when it comes to the next, thank you.
Next.
Yeah, it, it, it's tough, you know, uh.
Character.
Yeah. And I, and my cousin, I've been with Austin Fire for twenty-six years. You know, my cousin Howard, my cousin raised the Nugee, and it raised like brush breakers. That's all that goes down that road. So.
I'm surprised some people drive their cars on some of them roads that's so small.
Yeah, but it raised like one-four-nine is the only thing that goes down that damn road. You destroy the lot.
Hey, what are you guys going to do down here? Well, come this way a little bit more and they tear up the golf course. I mean, now they're talking about difficult development. What is it, a hundred and thirty houses?
Hundred and thirty-four.
Hundred fifteen, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, Tim, and, and Tim doesn't even care. And then you want to, Tim's like, oh, it's money, it's money. I'm like, like, Tim, you friggin' service? Yeah, I, I mean, like, like, let's be a little bit more realistic. Those houses that big one aren't even selling anymore. They, they will sell for like two-fifty, two-thirty. There's a bunch of empty ones now.
Are they?
Yeah. You know, I, I, I mean, you, you, you can't like expect a, a big return on, on, on all that right there. It just. I, I airify the golf course. He, he subcontracted here and filed all the greens and chairways. You know, so I worked RF Moss for all those years, and I bought after the one RF Moss, when I got it bought at the mall. He's like, oh, what's going to be?
Somebody.
I don't know who the hell it's going to be cash cow for. That's going to go off the cliff.
Hey, the town should have taken it a long time ago when they had the chance to set up buying three more nails.
Oh, they should have kept it. What they should have kept when they had it is what the town should have done. They should have kept it down there.
Yeah.
But, have a good night, guys.
Yeah, take care.
All right. Uh, next thing on the agenda is, uh, well, I know the CP two C, there's some, uh, a great collaborative last fifteen, and I haven't seen the courses this year, and I don't know.
Is it a holy cross again?
I'm trying to make it, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, the judge, I think he's referring to. Turn it off?
Oh, I did it. I'm sorry. I shut mine off. Um, are we going to be allowed to go to that or?
Just to see what you have the budget.
Yeah. Okay. Um. My, missed a question.
I turned my mic.
Uh, okay, we'll look into that further. Uh, TDR discussion from the February, February twentieth workshop. I want to thank you all for your input on the twentieth.
I sent an email, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I, I know. I know you did.
Yeah. Hello?
That's important.
Somebody's trying to sell you something.
I don't know if you got a chance to look over this. There was a couple minor additions.
Did you get input from, uh, Mr. Rowley?
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Because I know you were waiting for that, weren't you, Mr. Slavin?
We got input from Dave Bichette, Mr. Rowley, Ken Corr, George, Bob Iaffredi, John Witten.
We talked about setting a public hearing date if you wish to.
For the seventeenth, I think. That was going to be the, the Monday in between the regular two meetings.
Have we got time to advertise it for that? Does that just have to be advertised once or?
I think even if it's twice, I. I think even if it's twice, I checked with Brenda, I think it could, if not, would change the date, but I thought it can be done.
Oh, the 17th is not our usual.
No.
Meeting night.
I don't think it's going to be a very long night. It's up to you, if you want, if you don't want to make the 17th, you can push it back one more week till the 24th, include it in your regular meeting.
We have Mr. Fenton's article we have to hold a hearing on, and.
And Mr. Malcurn's.
Did he submit it?
Oh, yeah.
So, we have, did he submit it as a zoning article?
We'll have to ask the question of the attorney, I don't know.
That's what was, what was given to me, it looked like a building code.
Like a building code bylaw.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's written as, I think probably might, the committee might want a request from either Attorney Bone or Attorney Witten, what their take is on it, whether it falls under your jurisdiction or not. I'm not sure whether that article.
As I said before, I had no idea what I was supposed to do with that, I don't know why.
Yeah, I don't know if that article was properly written or not, as a legitimate article either. It's up to Town Council, but as a citizen's petition, we can't do anything, you know, as far as the board to not put it on the warrant.
What is the request?
Uh, has to do with the properties that, derelict properties. But I just, again, I don't know if it's properly written, it's not my expertise.
Let's see. So, I guess we'd be looking for a vote for a public hearing on the town meeting warrant office. And also to, I guess we've already submitted TDR, correct? Or do we need to vote to?
I'm sorry.
We've already submitted the TDR, or do we, do we need to vote to place that on the warrant?
You probably should do it since it's a new version, because we've done it before, but, you know, where it's coming back again, and also vote to, you know, for the public hearing, I would do both.
There was another question hanging on, street acceptance, do we need to have another public hearing for Cranberry Way, where we already had one?
No, I think we already had it, we never had the, it never was done in time, so therefore everything was in place.
I don't think the.
And we don't have, and we haven't had a hearing yet for Lynn Road and the other one, because all the paperwork and stuff isn't done yet. Charlie hasn't, you know, they haven't come up with the money to pay Charlie yet. My understanding is we don't need another hearing, but if you want, safety-wise, you can, if you want, just in case.
So, we would be looking to hold a hearing on TDR, the acceptance of Cranberry Way?
Cranberry Way, Cranberry Way.
Way Lane.
They've got it upstairs in the office, one or the other.
Plus the petition articles.
Two petition articles, and unfortunately, the Lynn Road, Bichette Way is still on hold, waiting for the, because you haven't been able to come back with an answer yet because they haven't.
Correct. We don't have a, that was a little late getting out to them, so.
Yeah. Well, they thought they had the meets and bounds and the layout, it looks like they had the meets and bounds done, but they never had the formal layout done with the sewer lines and electrical, anything else that's required. It's still a learning experience, we're probably going to have to, in the future, have everything in place by somewhere in October for Springtown meeting, because it just, it just doesn't work well. You've got three different, you know, pieces trying to get it all done for people, and it's not working.
Well, the process changed a couple times, I think, once we've got it.
Yeah, it's changed more than.
We do it 30, 40 times, we'll get it right.
Well, after these few couple here, we'll be all right, but it's harder than it should be.
All right, so, did I get a motion of that effect for March 17th?
Second. You made the motion, right, Mike? You want to do March 17th, or you want to do them all on the 24th for regular hearing?
What's the board's pleasure, you want to do it on the 24th, regular meeting?
Do a regular meeting instead of having extra time. Yeah, that'll, that'll work.
We do have a site plan for the corner of Galt and Toby Road.
Oh. Yep.
But we could probably do it all that night.
So, it's me the 24th, should I make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we.
Galt and Toby Road?
Not Galt, Cranberry Highway and Toby.
Cranberry and Toby.
The Wal-Mart corner.
The Robinson corner.
I'd like to make a motion that we hold public hearings on the 24th of March 2014 for the TDR documents, Cranberry Lane, and the two petition articles.
Was this something else?
I think that's all there was.
You said there was another public hearing scheduled.
Yeah, for site plan.
You got that, the guy wanted to change the zoning for the.
The fellow that wanted.
Yeah, that's one of the petition articles.
Petition articles, and the other one.
Change the side and rear setbacks.
Setback.
Yes. Mr. Fenton.
Fenton. Yes.
All righty then, the motion's been made, Mike, you seconded it, I believe. If there's no more discussion, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, thank you. We have some, the two Chapter 91 waterways licenses, we've, I believe, already signed off on those.
Yep.
That's Pine Tree Drive and Oak Street. Are we ever going to stop paying for this copying machine?
I don't know. They were talking about having one machine on the floor for the whole floor, because we got, we have that one machine sitting in the mailroom, which really is, it'd be nice to see them get rid of the other three that are on that, actually four, I think they're on that four. Cedar's got one, planning board office has one, selectmen's office has one, and the Cedar office has one. Be good exercise for all of us. It's a lot of money. I'll make that suggestion again to the town administrator.
You have a letter from Dave Bichette on the Wal-Mart Alt Passal, as it's referred to.
Sounds like wind. It's just coming back.
And an estimate for, excuse me, estimate for peer review for the SNA Trialty Trust. Has there been a request for, an application for sewerage on that site? Mr. Sewer Commissioner?
Which one, sorry?
The Wal-Mart Alt Passal.
Uh, no, they haven't made an official application yet, because when Wal-Mart was doing the, there, they tried to slide the two together, and we only gave them the one for the actual Wal-Mart, the one that Robinson's is going to do, they're going to have to apply, they were going to have to apply separately, so the answer is no.
And they're aware of that?
Yes.
And that's all I have on the agenda this evening.
I have one thing that's not anticipated in 48 hours for you. I got notified by the Attorney General's Office this afternoon, I got a quick note that Articles 21, 22, and 23 of the Fall Town Meeting were approved. So, the marijuana bylaw has been approved, the signed bylaw was approved, what was the third one? We have three.
Bob, you remember?
No, that's, that was not a zoning bylaw. That's political. God, I forget which one, we had three of them.
Are you the all-powerful Oz this evening?
Uh, do you remember?
Ah.
Can't believe I forget.
Signed bylaw.
Marijuana, and there was one other one we had, we did three. They were 21, 22, and 23.
Oh, God, that's terrible.
I also have a copy of a letter that was sent to the AG's office asking that respectfully request that you deem the signed bylaw an illegal regulation and strike down the signed bylaw in its entirety, submitted by Lobster Pot. The Grouch Brothers. They actually.
Submitted by who?
The Grouch Brothers.
Oh, Lobster Pot?
Marina Lobster Pot. The AG's office read it, took it under consideration, went through it, and decided to approve the law. I have a copy if you want for your records.
Did it cite any specifics as to why it should be?
I'll paraphrase real quickly, it says, it is my understanding that the signed bylaw was drafted in an effort to eliminate our sign, which of course is not the case, because it is grandfathered. One of the selectmen, in fact, stated their intent was to prohibit signs such as the Lobster Pot sign. Actually, that was two of the ZBA members, I don't believe any of the selectmen ever said that. He said, which is an illuminated sign, they don't actually put down there that it's a flashing illuminated sign, which is what the issue was. Talks about grandfathering, but then it also says that the state is going to take by eminent domain some of the land, which includes the land they're assigned on, and I believe that whole project is on hold.
And I think it stops short of his property also.
Yeah, it does, so.
The latest rendition of it does, anyway.
So, I don't believe it showed that anyways, but that's some of the things they complained about, and.
They've been signed in town since day one.
They complained about only a small number of people attended the meeting. Actually, it says the town of Wareham scheduled a meeting to vote on the signed bylaw during the World Series. Town meeting, it's a town meeting, you know, but. What else did they complain about? Unfair competition with McDonald's signs versus local restaurants. Prohibits creativity. I'm trying to think. That it's undersized, therefore not easily readable. That's about it, and I think the last thing says numerous provisions of the signed bylaw that we believe are not legal. And it states here, there's well-settled law that you cannot prohibit people from using truck signs, yet the signed bylaw states they are prohibited. I don't know where that came from.
Settled, is that like settled science?
Yeah, well, the sign, actually, the, the thing to Margaret Hurley, it says objections to the Warehams, S.I.H.N. bylaw.
Settled spelling also. I wish they'd voiced their concerns.
They could have come, we could have talked to them.
Public hearing.
Could have made some changes necessary to.
You know, I think we're all screaming for input on this.
The history in the signed bylaw, it goes way, way back before you came on board, Judge. Every time we drafted one, so you have a public hearing just before, Donna Angus would come in, Flo Byron, and the Grouch Brothers, and they would all state, you know, they're against it, this and that, but they're with you. Put it on further, further study.
Further study, you never have.
And you never see them again. And it happens from year to year to year, the same history, the same people, and they tell you the same thing.
Yeah, because '92, a lot of work was done on the signed bylaws. I found it was, it was as big a document as what we have.
Flo Byron, it was, Donna Angus was in good shape then, and the Grouch Brothers. I can remember clear as day.
We, we, we did get some input at the TDR workshop, a little, some fresh faces there questioning that, so.
Mr. White recorded it, so hopefully it's up on the WC TV. Well, gave a disc for me to serve in. We'll do the hearing, we'll have John Witten come in for the hearing, and then if you want, decide whether you want Mr. Witten in for the, at town meeting. Hope we feel comfortable with that. Just need to know.
If there's nothing further, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So, that means I have to second it? Yes, I necessarily. I have no place to go, I want to stay.
Could have brought a deck of cards.
I'm sorry, I don't know, we had people, we had guests. Yeah, second it. Bob's training. So, what value taking?
Motion's on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, stayed, move, meeting adjourned at 9:15. Thank you, Bob.